All right. Welcome to this evening's meeting. We're going to have our invocation by Elder Rosalynn Elder of Divine Faith Ministries, be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand with me.
Let's bow our heads. Praises be to our eternal and gracious God, Father God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, the Holy One of Israel, Alpha and Omega, our beginning and our end. Oh Lord God, we just come thanking you for blessing us with another beautiful miraculous and absolutely wonderful rainy day, oh God. For this is a day that you created especially for us and we shall rejoice and be glad in it, Lord God. We thank you for this opportunity, oh Lord, to be able to come boldly before your throne of grace where we can obtain all the grace and mercy that we need. And we thank you for the opportunity to just be able to sit at your presence, Lord God. For you assure us that where there are two or more in agreement, Lord God, that you are in the midst of the prayer. Forgive us of our sins, cleanse and purify our hearts, and allow this prayer to be holy and acceptable in your sight. Recalibrate our intentions and refocus our minds as we lift our eyes to seek you first before this meeting. Shift our perspective to seek your peace above all else. Usher in your Spirit of unity, oh Lord, and remind us of your greatest commandment to love you with all our hearts, our minds, our souls, and with all of our strength, and to love our neighbors as ourselves. Father God, we lift up the Board of Commissioners, we lift up the Chairman and every Commissioner, Lord God. We thank you for their time, we thank you for their resources, their commitment, we thank you for their support in everything they do for Clayton County, Lord God. Give them your wisdom and award them graciously with understanding. Renew their strength and grant them with godly courage as they lead districts one, two, three, and four. Teach them, oh Lord God, to acknowledge you in all of their ways as you would direct their paths, and let them walk in complete unity, oh Lord. Give them a kindred spirit of unity that will allow them to have positive thoughts and propel them to make astute decisions that will push this wonderful county effectively and efficiently. Oh Lord God, we thank you in advance that every agenda item, every goal, every initiative would be exceedingly successful. Only you know what lies ahead, Lord God, but remind them that all things are possible through you, Lord God. For you are a good God, just and a righteous God, and we place our faith in you. We lift up every resident of Clayton County, oh Lord, and we pray that every day of our lives will be the best days of our lives. Let us live in peace and love, encamp us with a bond of unity that will end racial tension and violence with the help and hope that the Holy Spirit provides. Let your peace rain down on us today as we seek you more than anything else. Fuel our faith in you as you are our Provider and our Sustainer. And it's with the Spirit of incredible thanksgiving. We're grateful for every miracle, every breakthrough, everything that you bless this county with, Lord God. We are grateful. And we ask that you grant every single petition, Lord God, before your throne. We ask it in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Welcome to the February 18th, 2020 Board of Commissioners Meeting, Clayton County Board of Commissioners Meeting. Our first order of business would be the adoption of the agenda. Are there any amendments from any Commissioners?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamper.
Yes, I would like to pull out two things from the consent agenda. One is number 10, Budget Amendment 219. And the other is ordinance, well, number 21, ordinance number 31.
Do you want to pull them to the regular agenda?
Yes.
You said 31? No, 21.
21, number 10, and then number 21.
Okay, number 10 is budget adjustment 2-19 FY '20 Commissioners Transfer Funds From Clayton County Clean and Beautiful Originally Budgeted For The Landfill. An amount of $200,000. And item 21, ordinance 2020-31, an ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County, Georgia, as amended specifically Part 1, related laws pertaining to Clayton County, Article 2, Board of Commissioners. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved and second. Those in favor say aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Any others?
Then our next.
Well, we haven't adopted the agenda. So that was to take those two items off and put it on the regular agenda. So we need to adopt the agenda as notated. Is there a motion to adopt that?
Before we do that, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vee, with what we discussed with you and Mr. E.G.K., does that require any?
We can do that after executive session.
Gotcha, thank you.
Thanks.
Adoption, motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Probably move the second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you. Our next item of business would be a presentation, which is MARTA jurisdictional briefing.
Good evening, Chairman Turner and members of the Clayton County Board. How are you all this evening?
Good.
Good.
I'm going to run through a presentation, and I just want to point a few things out that are in your package. We do have the schedule of our, of the MARTA pop-up locations to get the Breeze Cards, and we have several that are scheduled for here in Clayton County, and there's some information about that. And during my presentation, I will be talking about our bus shelter and amenity program, but there's a detailed report about all of the sites that we're currently working on or have installed, and you can refer to those for some details. I obviously won't go over the specific details of each shelter location. I do want to thank Jerry Griffin, a board member who's here, for his support, and most importantly, I do want to thank the County Commission for their support and partnership in getting the 15th Amendment passed. So thank you very much for your support. The agenda that I'm going to go through, we're going to talk about the multi-person, multi-purpose operational and maintenance facility, some work that we're doing that we showed several of you around the Justice Center Transit Hub, some proposed routes and amenities that we have, and then some work that we want to make sure that we do to support the census. The Clayton County multipurpose, multi-purpose, I can't get that word out, operations and maintenance facility is moving forward. I want to remind us of where we were in terms of the 2014 agreement and what we have reset with the most recent agreement. So we now see this as a substantially larger facility, and we really intend on moving a substantial bit of our operation of our bus system down to Clayton County, substantially more square footage than was originally intended and originally in the 14th Amendment or the 2014 agreement. And because we are really also including state of good repair and trying to move a facility that needs work into a modern facility here in this county, we will, as we've talked about before, we will use a substantial amount of the existing one cent sales tax from the overall MARTA system and not the money that we're setting aside to advance this project. So we have been working on this. We have received from the Federal Transit Administration a categorical exclusion, which is the first step in clearing the environmental process, which is something that we've been working on. So now that we are going to work to develop the concept of the site, which will include fueling and bus maintenance, an administrative office, a police precinct, as well as a training facility. A next internal step is I do need to get the MARTA Board bylaws, and the MARTA Act requires me to get authorization from the Board to move into the procurement phase for the site, and we'll be beginning that process shortly. And then we also want to submit a competitive grant to the FTA in order to get some additional funds for this, and we're working to get this facility open by 2028. So as you know, big step has been crossed in terms of the environmental analysis and moving forward with that, and now we're working on the site design. So working well to move that project forward, and here's the timeline. The, I'm sorry. What we hope to get out of this, much more than what we originally envisioned with a small facility, we want to increase the efficiency of operating the MARTA system and clearly make sure that we're relocating equipment from some of our other bus facilities to this new facility in order to reduce deadhead time of our bus system and make sure that we're, you know, reducing the overall mileage, lost time, lost revenue time where buses are traveling farther distances to come down into the county and parts of South Fulton, making sure that our employees have good access to it, and also ensure that anytime buses that fail in service, that they're, that we can get them into the maintenance facility quicker. We see that a newer facility here in Clayton County will lower our overall operational costs and making sure that we have an efficient operation. We also believe that this investment in jobs in Clayton County is very, very important to the partnership that we've established back in 2014, and as you can see that we have a substantially larger facility that will create jobs not only in the construction of the facility, but also with the new transit facility and ongoing operation of that. And we will commit to be holding job fairs as we have in the past here to make sure that we can employ as many Clayton County residents as we can. We're looking at the facility to allow us to expand also our paratransit service, which continues to grow and make sure we have capacity for that as it grows. And we also see this as a great facility, as a potential location as we expand into alternative fuels, particularly electric buses, is something that we're considering. Next, I'd like to talk about the Transit Center that we're moving forward at the Justice Center. This hub is going to be key to the operation of our services we've been providing here in Clayton County. This is a visual of what we hope our Phase 1 should look like. We've been working with your staff to make sure that we can use the facility that the county owns at the Justice Center, have an easy transport for our multiple buses, use it as an area where people can easily transfer from route to route. This is a rendering of what Phase 1 would look like, and we would have shelters and be able to use some of the space that we have. We want to include some artwork to make sure that it is a friendly environment, have some park and ride spaces, and make sure that we have an improvement for pedestrian flow so they can move safely throughout the facility. So Phase 1, we've completed the design concept. We're working with your team to put together and finalize and execute a IGA between the county and MARTA. And Phase 1 scope of work was awarded to an ODECO and an African-American female-owned firm based in East Point, so we're excited to make sure that we're expanding our commitment to small and minority businesses. And we expect that this Transit Center will open in the spring of 2020. Phase 1A will be done before we get to the Phase 2, which is where we would be able to install Breeze machines where we would have more permanent structures. So this is just some concepts of renderings of what other more permanent transit hubs would look like, and we're committing to advance this design and also make sure that we complete this project by fiscal year 2022. So we didn't want to just wait to design the final version of this, but make sure that we're implementing something early so that we're providing better service to the residents of Clayton County. The early Phase 1 will have what I call Jersey Barriers alongside to just make sure that the bus traffic and the pedestrians are protected safely, and we are going to use these as mural sites. And here are some examples of some of the things that we've done and use our Artbound Program, which has been highly successful in order to just make it more of a pleasing environment, and we'll be working with the county and the community to make sure that we get the right artists and connect with people in the community to make sure that it looks like a pleasing environment. We also have some new bus routes and amenities that we're advancing in an update on our BRT system that I'd like to talk about for a moment. We do have two new routes that we're getting ready to put in service. As you all know very well, we have a lot of north-south connectivity, and many of our roadway are kind of designed to go north-south, so this will be a connection going east and west. We've heard a lot of need, and a lot of the riders have asked for this service, and we're looking to expand and run this 197 and 198 service. The two routes will go in front of public herrings, and the anticipation is that the MARTA Board will approve the service changes in August, and that both of these routes, the 197 and 198, would operate from Church Street at the Rivertown Center. So we're looking forward to that. Details of the 197 are here. It's, you know, going to really provide good connectivity east and west so that riders who are, you know, trying to cross the county don't have to trek way up north and then come back south. And this is the proposed route for 198, or 198, which will also provide great connectivity going east and west. So lastly, I want to get into, on this service changes, I want to get into the amenities update. Like I said earlier, we have all of those details here in your handout, but we continue to advance our program to bring amenities, bus amenities, over a five-year period, the commitment around 150 new amenities to Clayton County over this five years. Seventeen bus stops in Clayton County have been upgraded with new shelters. Thirteen more are coming in 2020 for a total of 30 shelters. Clayton County currently has a total of 39 shelters installed. The installation timelines are pending, some permitting from Georgia DOT, and Frank Rucker's group is working closely with them to make sure that we can get the permitting process done so that we can continue to advance this important. One of the things that we need to continue to talk about and work with the county on is, in some of the locations that you can see in this brochure that we have, we do not have sidewalks and curb cuts. So one of the things that we need to do is we need to start talking with you about how we're going to make sure that these stops become ADA accessible and make sure that the patrons who have disabilities can use these stations. So this is a map, and it's in the handout that sort of shows not only where they're installed, but what's under construction and what's under permitting. And as you know, we will be advancing this over the next five years and continuing to expand our program to provide more bus amenities to the county. Just some pictures before and after of what these look like, and I think these are the most profound things to me of how we are really just changing, you know, what our customers are experiencing from, you know, as we all know, today is a pouring rain day and not a great day to be standing outside waiting for a bus. And here's a great example of how we're changing that environment for our customers. A Bus Rapid Transit Plan update. We have kicked off our contract in late 2019 to bring in our design consultant to do the design work. We are completing and working on the conceptual planning in the spring of 2020 to the summer of 2020. We should be completed by the fall with the conceptual design, and Routes 196 and 191 are the routes that will be improved dramatically with this service. These are just some concepts of what a BRT station would look like, clearly substantially different than the shelters that you saw in the earlier pictures. So we want to make sure that this is a welcoming environment, providing great protection, but also providing good information to our customers about where buses are, being able to contact people for information, more like the station environment that we have in our rail stations. And then we also recognize that, you know, in light of the fact that we are investing a lot of money in improving our bus stops and putting more trash cans in, the, you know, the outcome of that, the unintended outcome of that is just more trash in the neighborhood. So through the IGA that we put forward, we're committing to make a $100,000 donation to make sure that the Keep Clayton Beautiful campaign is supported and that we can do a better job working with the county to make sure that trash is being removed and that our bus stops look like they should look. Finally, I want to just talk about where we are with our partnership with you on our 2020 census and making sure that we get a complete count, as we all recognize it both benefits a county, county government, but it also makes sure that MARTA, as a transit agency, is getting the federal funds, that its fair share of the federal funds. We are, we're committed to working with our jurisdictional partners here in Clayton County, but is also Fulton de Cab and the City of Atlanta in promoting the work that you all are doing around the count, making sure that we get a complete count. We've installed some bus advertisements with all of the jurisdictions logos around the census count, and we are running these buses throughout the system to make sure that we're getting people to recognize that this is coming up and that the census is here. We've met with members of the Clayton County Complete Count Committee on February 14th about partnership opportunities so that we can supply these buses and other things into the events. And we recognize that there's billions of dollars in federal transportation spending that is going to be tied to making sure that we get this count right, and we'll be working with you throughout to make sure that we're supporting your efforts. So with that, finish my presentation and see if you have any questions for me.
All right, and we thank you for your presentation. Are there any questions for Mr. Parker, by board?
I just want to say thank you for coming back and presenting to us and holding to your commitments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just as a side note, the quarterly, they come for us with an updated briefing, so I appreciate that that is being done, as the Commissioner just said. Commissioner Davis.
And again, thank you for coming out and holding to your word in what we discussed. I saw the new shelters out on Terra Boulevard, and they look very nice, so I want to say thank you.
And I know our board member, Roberta Abdul Salam, is here, and she's been a big supporter of making sure that we staff are advancing all of the contracts that we need to get those bus shelters out, so thanks to our board members who are here. So thanks.
Ken, I would like to get a little clarity on the cleanup. Okay. Will MARTA be responsible for the cleanup around the bus stops?
No, we have entered into IGAs with both the county and all of the, and I'm going to look over at, in all the cities. Have we executed it with all the cities yet?
All except one.
All except one. So we're working through IGAs and sharing revenue around the income that's generated from the shelters, and, you know, we have a clear plan and expectations of what we're responsible for, and the emptying of the trash cans and the cleaning of them will be done by those jurisdictions. And the upkeep and maintenance, like for example, if someone was to break some of the glass or damage the structure, we would be responsible for that.
We would be responsible for the pickup, trash pickup?
Yes.
I have a couple. First of all, thank you for coming. Thank you for working through this process, and thank you for the bus stop, and specifically that does mean that there is going to be a bus stop at the Justice Center. Okay? But also, the art program. I know you're going to work with the county, so I'm hoping that you would work with our number-one art school, which is still well-schooled in the arts, as well as some of the other local schools, to get artists involved. And I do have a question about the $100,000. Is that coming from the fund specifically from Clayton, or they're coming from your MARTA general fund, $100,000?
Yeah. The plan is to do that continually, and it is, it's coming from the overall MARTA, MARTA money, not the money that we're setting aside for the expansion.
Okay, I wanted to hear that for the public, because even though we've had conversations, it's very important for us to be transparent through this process, because we get the calls. The other thing, as you already know, I'm glad that we're getting more shelters, but looking at it, we're at less than, well, a little bit over 6% with the 39 stops, and I'm understanding that there probably would be some additional stops added over the course of time from the 635. So even with 150 over a course of five years, that's still less than 25%. So what I would implore you all to do is use some of the different tactics that other jurisdictions have used, and possibly put in an augmented stop so that people still would have shelter, because the bottom line is, we want people to be able to go to work and go wherever they're going without being in the rain. And I know that it's based upon ridership, but for me, I think that we can do a whole lot better. So I'm not saying that I'm not grateful for what you have done in the increase, but as I said on our phone call some time ago, over five years, less than 25% is still not quite what I would hope it to be. And then the other thing is, I have a note here that there are several GDOT projects going on, and I spoke to Mr. McMurray, and I know there has been some coordination on making sure that we look at the safe routes. We were hoping to bring MARTA into the conversation, that's something I get a call about all the time. We just had two fatalities on Terra Boulevard, and between these agencies, we've got to figure out a way to make sure that we can get people safely to the stop, because if they can't make it to the stop safely, you're not increasing ridership. And if they can't stay out of the rain, then that's not increasing ridership either.
Yeah, I will say, you know, two things, let me just point out. One is, when you look at the pictures in the document with the shelters, some of the shelters on Terra Boulevard, there aren't sidewalks, so we really need to make sure that the work that GDOT's doing will improve pedestrian access around that corridor. I know they're advancing it. We're working with them to make sure that we're providing input, so we will continue to work with GDOT. And then, you know, I recognize, and you're absolutely right about the percentage of shelters that will, or stops that will have shelters, but we are, you know, we're at a place where the vast majority of, or the majority of bus riders in Clayton County, between whether they're getting on at a rail station that's outside of Clayton County or at that shelter, you know, many people are, you know, commuting from a bus stop, going to a rail station, and vice versa. So most people are waiting in a protected area, and we'll continue to advance that and prioritize the busiest stations so that the vast majority of people will have a, you know, a shelter. I, you know, I ride the bus every day, and I don't think my little stop will ever have a shelter, so I stand there with my umbrella and try a shelter, so I stand there with my umbrella and try and tie myself on my app so I'm not in the rain like I was this morning, but I, you know, I recognize the need, but I think I would be disingenuous to say that every single stop cannot physically fit and just, you know, some of the ride, some of the stops like the ride I use are just not a lot of riders using it right now.
I understand.
But we know where we want to get.
I just think we should look at some alternatives so that we can look at a more cost-effective way to cover more. But your hair looked good for being in the rain. You did good. Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
Well, I have a comment. Is Melissa still here? Oh, oh, okay. Well, at some point, and I hope in the very near future, that maybe we can establish a satellite office here in Clayton, you know, for managing and all, so I think that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Share screen here?
Yes. Well, I'm not sure about here, in this facility here, but in Clayton County.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Again, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you for your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
I know I'm a little bit, but I just want, we brought you guys, on Friday, on Valentine's Day, we did a big thing for our customers at the stations and also at the bus loops for transit-oriented dates, and MARTA loves our customers, so I've brought you guys a couple of the things that we handed out. Can I give them to the?
Yeah, just give it to one of the officers, it'd be fine. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I won't prolong the time very much. I did want to mention two things very quickly. In the end of October, first of November, we actually held the first-ever Mobility Paratransit Senior Citizens Forum. We had over 400 people attend, and what we're now hoping to do is go to the various jurisdictions and hear that. In 40 years, it had never been done before. A lot of feedback. MARTA has a slide presentation on the findings from that event, from those hearings. We had a stenographer that took all the notes and everything, and I think they're interesting. I'm not sure exactly how much ridership we have using mobility right now. You got it? Okay. And while she's looking for that, I do want to mention, next month is five years of service in Clayton County, and we're looking forward to doing a huge, huge town hall meeting as a celebration and commemoration of five years of service. You got it? We can get that later. I just wanted to share those two things very quickly.
Okay, thank you for doing so. And yes, please just forward that information to the commissioners. That's good information to have. Madam Clerk.
The Board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time to, time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparatory remarks or use abusive language when addressing the Board.
Mr. Alvin Farmer.
Mr. Alvin Farmer, I wish that MARTA CEO would have stayed here. Most important, I would like to have a meeting with the lady over there in the red hat. They wouldn't give me her number, I mean, her name, and then whoever else she feels that's in her chain of command. The second thing is, the MARTA CEO just left here. We've been fighting for a year to get that bus stop moved. That lady just sat there, gave me her name. First, she said two weeks from now, then she said a month from now. I must be losing something. I consider that lip service. The Japanese say a picture worth a thousand words, so we've been fighting for a year, and then they still saying two weeks and a month? You fell for that. I didn't. I don't think the people of Clayton County fell for that, so we're going to wait and see. But if anybody get hurt, you and them, with all the powers that I have, will pay that price. The second thing is, these bathrooms going around here, y'all need some kind of ventilation or some kind of air freshener, whatever going on around here. That's the second thing. Third thing is, y'all need a physical fitness program in the Clayton County employees. I see a lot of healthy people in the military. We had a, we had a physical fitness test we had to respond to every year. That bus stop at our, inside my subdivision, and everybody around here knows, unless y'all not going on the roads I going on, our streets are turning up. What you need to do is, somebody milked you on that job or whoever you called it, you need to get them people that put the roads on from Atlanta all the way down to Miami, Florida, because I was down there for the Super Bowl, and them roads been in a long time, and they still standing up. These roads are not standing up. I don't, I don't know, they haven't been too paved, paved too long ago. So we did not get a product for our money. Five Station Number Six, we did not get a, get a, get a product for our money. Those are our censors on the road, we did not get a product for our money. And Mrs. Singleton, I mean, yeah, Sonna Gregory, no disrespect for you, but Monday Mills High School still sits on a D grade. My advice to you is, either quit the Board of Commissioners, get that D grade off your paper, or take a leave or absent until sometime, because my mother ain't stepping no D grade and everything like that. And I didn't step it for my son and everything. So we need y'all to work on those things, and MARTA came here, and that bus stopped, and they talking about two weeks a month, and you sit there and laugh. But it's not your child, or his child, or his family that's going to be affected if an accident happens. I don't understand this. In the Air Force, that thing would have been moved the next day, or somebody be looking for a new job. And somebody said, I can't impeach you, that maybe we need to recall you. Either way, we need you, because you are not doing the job that the, that the voters voted for you to do, sir. No disrespect. I'm just straight up with you.
Thank you, sir. Your time's up. Dr. Hillary Jack. Don't make me say it, don't make me say it. Come on up, sir.
You don't play, pronounce the English.
Thank you.
Yeah. Chairman, Commissioners. Yeah, my name is Dr. Hillary Badger. I go by Dr. Jack. I'm a pharmacist, I'm a local pharmacist here in Clayton County. I've been in Clayton County since over 20 years now, and I have my pharmacy for about 10 years now. So what I do is, I do presentation, I do what are called, it's a personal journey to health and wellness transformation, and I thank Commissioner Franklin Warner for giving me opportunity to present my, in her town hall meeting. So it was very, very successful. So why I'm here today is to ask other Commissioners if any possibility to give me a spot in one of the town hall meetings, so I can be able to present to the citizens about the transformation of health and wellness transformation. It's a journey. It's not just something very simple. So, and I get a very good feedback from the one we did on the first of this month, and for that, I'm here to see if we can expand it to make Clayton County a healthier, a healthier county, or a healthier community. I always have a say that a healthy community is a wealthy community.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, and we definitely appreciate you wanting to be more engaged and involved in the county, especially when it comes to health and wellness. If you would, please leave some of your cards with Mr. COO, Mr. Dickton Stanford there, so make sure all the Commissioners get it, because at some point in time, we always have community events, and to have you there would, in my opinion, be a plus. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Timothy Von Dale Jefferson. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Real quick, I just want to say thank you for being a business owner and a resident. We heard last meeting about how we pay more and a higher wage here in Clayton County, because we have so many people that are coming into the county to work, or vice versa, but to have someone that has a business, a successful business in the county, who cares about the county, and resides here is definitely a win-win situation. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you.
Mr. Jefferson.
Good evening, Chairman. Vice Chair Davis, Commissioners, Timothy Von Dale Jefferson, unincorporated Clayton County. In the light of the fact that this is Black History Month, I would like to acknowledge three people I happen to have met that have been significant members of our society, and that's Maynard Jackson, Hosea Williams, and H.J. Herman Russell. Having the privilege of meeting those individuals was a blessing, and I'd like to acknowledge them for Black History Month. I am, I'm quite disturbed that I left the last meeting with the assault and slander from Commissioner Franklin Warner. I, since then, I have gotten a open records request to verify the very thing that I had a conversation with, with Mr. Terry Cole. And I'm 40 years retired contractor, built houses, shopping centers, convenience stores. Health reasons sent me in a new direction to become a consultant. I'm a consultant for J.E. Group LLC. Been a consultant with them for five years. We operate from Prince George County, Maryland, to Broward County, Florida. So when Commissioner Warner makes an accusation towards me personally, I take it to heart, because I do a lot in this community to try to bring businesses here. And there appears to be some misunderstanding, Commissioner. About two years ago, I asked to meet with you on economic development, and you refused to meet with me. So I have since gone through a different protocol. I go through the COO and the Chairman of the County, and if need be, they will bring you into the mix. But I intentionally, because of, and I supported you, I voted for you, but because of your attitude and the way you have talked to the county employees in a demeaning, derogatory manner, it is shameful to try to justify even meeting with you or trying to have an articulate conversation because of your attitude and your overburdeness. So I appreciate it in the future, that you sit behind this diocese and not use it as a bully pulpit, or your incumbency as a bully pulpit, because at the end of the day, I am simply a citizen trying to operate in the spirit of excellence in Clayton County. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Margie Treywick.
I live in Clayton County, have seven years. My concern tonight is, this I think is my last opportunity to make an appeal to you over the mistake you made in December of 18, when you rezoned property in the lower end of the county from agricultural one-acre lots to RS-110 without the knowledge of the homeowners or anybody down there. It came quite of a shock to us when we found out all the property had been changed and nobody knew about, no signs, anything. Well, in the process, we've gotten to know several of you very well. You finally reverted, you solved a mistake that you made. You reverted 15 of those portions back. You failed to, you kept telling us the other three portions that were down there that you were working on, you were reviewing, you were going to do something about it. Well, next month, it's going to come up with a mess. For some reason, they're going to present a flat that is absolutely unacceptable for us and the county down there at that rate. There's several reasons, several problems, that's going to have to be worked on before they can build a house, but it never should have come to the point that they could have a house on 11,000 square foot lots, and a one-acre lot's supposed to be. It's depressing to see what you have done to us, and we have voted for you, we've elected you to be our watchman. You didn't look out for our interest down there, and right now, you still have a chance to change it and put it back. It's no different for him to have that property and you put it back than all this property that you changed before. It's all the same principle. So all of it should have gone back at that time. Now, we'll have a mess down there because the roads are not going to handle that. And I want to make a comment too about what the guy said about roads in the county. If you travel on McDonough Road anywhere down there, you going to run into potholes all over the place. Fayette County has just gone from the river and did, redone all the paving and everything on their side of the street, but Clayton County, you just get up and come over into Clayton County, and it's just like pothole after pothole. You hope roads the same way they do. Those roads need to be resurfaced and potholes filled. So that's my main concern, and like I say, coming up in March, we're going to have to, we're all going to be deciding on this, and we in the county down there do not like what you have done to us. We're not happy with you right now. But you still have an opportunity to make it right, and I feel like you need to, it's no different from that guy that owns that property than the other property that you've changed without their knowledge. It's the same thing, so you need to have all of it back to one-acre lots. In fact, the comprehensive plan said that...
Your time is up, ma'am.
Need to be two-acre lots, but that's...
Thank you.
Real quick, Ms. Treywick, I did send out a update on, based upon what was sent to me by our Transportation and Development Director, as well as Chairman, regarding the roads. So we have sent that information over to Chairman, as well as the Director, for them to address. Thank you so much.
Rob Leatherwood.
Rob Leatherwood, District Two of Clayton County. I wanted to come before you tonight to bring to your attention some behavior that is unbecoming of a public official. As most of you are aware, communication to our residents and constituents is of the utmost importance, so much so that the Association County Commissioner of Georgia, ACCG, has a code of ethics policy where it says Commissioners must be impartial in their actions and to keep the public informed of county operations and activities, since we believe that county business is ever public business. It's unfortunate that Commissioner Hamburg's actions violate those code of conducts, ethics. Back in September 2019, I was removed from her community email e-blast that she sends out, which was shocking, because I've been receiving those for years. I couldn't imagine why she chose to remove me from those emails. What was most disappointing is that after multiple attempts of requesting to be added back, Commissioner Hamburg never responded or even acknowledged my request. However, through the State Attorney General's Office, I could receive those e-blasts by simply submitting an open records request directly to Commissioner Hamburg's office. I hope that maybe she would simply add me back to the email e-blast, but unfortunately, I still request them each and every week. Ultimately, it really shouldn't take more than 15 minutes for Commissioner Hamburg to send me those emails, but it usually takes her office about two to three days, which is expected, as an open records request response must be made within three business days. On January 10th, 2020, I submitted one of those weekly requests, and Commissioner Hamburg's office never responded. With that, she violated Georgia law, and the State Attorney General, on January 22nd, 2020, chose to exercise their right to notify Clayton County of her violation of Georgia law. Now, I did receive the requested e-blast email from her office, but I also received a copy of the county's response to the Attorney General from Chief Staff Attorney Charles Reed. With his response, he stated, and I quote, "It is disappointing that Mr. Leatherwood escalated his complaint to the Attorney General's Office, rather than simply reaching out to Commissioner Hamburg's office or to mine to resolve this issue. Mr. Reed, I respect your defense of the county and of the Commissioner, but as you can see, the real disappointment is the actions of Commissioner Hamburg. She ignored my request to be added back to the e-blast. She violated ACCG code of ethics. She violated state law, which requires me to notify the state attorney, not the county attorney." So in closing, I have heard that some municipalities have even been sued when public officials have discriminated against their residents and their constituents. Taxpayer resources are meant for the taxpayers, and when we deny the taxpayer of their rights, who are really hurting in the end? Thank you.
Thank you. Mickey Garber.
Mickey Garber, unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. I will not deliver a speech, rather, I would like to ask some pertinent questions before I deliver any speech. The MARTA Amendment fifteen, has it, Chairman Turner, has it been denied or rejected?
It's been, uh, approved.
Has been approved. Commissioners, um, many of you attended the Economic Development Board meeting somewhere toward the first of the year, and the discussion was that y'all were to work on developing common goals. Have you held any of those meetings? Chairman Turner?
State your question again. Have we held any meetings in reference to the Chamber and so forth?
To developing common goals with the Economic Development Board.
Both of those boards are reorganizing, I'll say it like that, so no, the answer to your question is no. Chamber is undergoing new, new, uh, director and staff and the Economic Development Director has recently resigned as well.
I would like to put in a request that if any of those meetings are to be held, that it be advertised in the paper publicly so anyone wishing to attend can attend.
That's only what, that's, we have to do that.
Okay, I have one minute left. On night, uh, this past week, on radio station ninety point one, Public Radio, Commissioner Chairman in Henry County touted Henry County closeness to the airport, touting Henry County's I-75 corridor, touting their desire to have a theme park and casino in the racetrack area, touting Henry County as a medical generator due to their airport. Clayton County has I-75, I-675, I-85, and close to I-20. We have Southern Regional Medical Center, we have Clayton State as a business generator. I'm tired of Atlanta and Henry County eating my lunch. Thank you.
Just a point of reference, uh, Mr. Garber, I spoke on that same radio channel about a month ago.
Yes, sir, and I heard you.
Okay.
You sounded-
So, we had, we had, we have a lot to brag about as well, even more so, so I'm proud of the fact that you're listening.
I don't want anybody out talking me.
That's all I'm about to do. Oh goodness. No. Okay, somebody's going to have to help me with this one that looks like, uh, Blacker or Black, Blackaby? Elaine or Ebenezer? No? Okay. Um, restate that, no, it's not that. I need to restate, when you state, when you write your name on the sign up list, please make sure it's legible. Angel James. Angel James?
Jones, I'm sorry.
Jones?
I'm just trying to be, I have none.
Okay, thank you, no problem.
My name is Abigail Judd Edwards, um, I am a Clayton County resident, um, in Jonesboro area. This is my first meeting, so I'm sorry, I'm a little bit nervous, um, but I just wanted to propose an idea. I am a small business owner, I do talent and production, so I wanted to introduce a beauty pageant for Clayton County. I am, um, a crown winner myself for Marietta and also, um, sorry, I've been Chattanooga, Tennessee, so I wanted to bring that down here to Clayton County and I'm not sure what avenue to take. I've already written out a business plan and everything, so I don't know if y'all can help me get to the right direction or if this is the right meaning I'm supposed to propose that to, but-
I can help you.
Okay.
Actually, um, used to be in a Miss America system, they, it depends on which system you want to be involved in, but we can definitely take those steps and see what we can do and see if the public is also interested. We might have my pleasure too.
Yes, please get her business card. It should be one up front or she'll take care of it afterward, I guess.
It's up front though, right?
There's some up front.
Or just come see her after, after we close out.
I won't be able to stay long because I'd go pick up my little brother, but-
All right, I can understand.
There's one up front. They can get you one right there.
Yes, thank you. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comments.
Mr. Chair, before we move forward, um, let me just take a moment of personal privilege.
Commissioner Gregory.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to mention, um, unfortunately, this weekend, we, um, had the homegoing celebration for my ex-husband, who's also my daughter's father. Three of my sisters came in town for the funeral Saturday evening. We're just sitting in my living room just laughing like sisters do and all of a sudden, one of my other sisters says, um, "Sona, dial nine one one, she's having a stroke." I dial nine one one, Chief Roberts, awesome dispatcher. I mean, when you sit there and me calling, you know, this is my big sister who's been mom since I lost my mom, and you see her, you don't know if that person's going to take their last breath right there in your living room in front of your eyes. She kept me calm and told me exactly, you know, what to ask her, what to say, whatever. Uh, she got the, the ambulance, well, the fire truck came first. Those guys are awesome. Then the ambulance came, the guys and girls on that ambulance, they were awesome. I mean, they were just so professional, they know what they're doing, uh, they listen to us, e- even when, you know, her speech seemed like it was normal, they were so attentive and listening to us to, when we tell it, that's not her demeanor, she's not right. And so, I just wanted to mention that. I, you know, a lot of times, we can find a lot of bad, we look, we can find something bad. And I thought about the young kids at Mondays Mall High School who are in this firefighter program and a lot of times, I remind them, guys, this is not like PE, you're going to be dealing with someone's life. Um, the doctor told us, had, had there not been quick action, the clock was on my sister's brain that she wouldn't be living today. And so, I just got to thank, um, Chief Roberts, dispatchers who helped us on the first, on the front line, and then the paramedics and so forth. Uh, my sister is still in the hospital, but she's doing fine, we're hoping she'll be released tomorrow or the next day, but thank you all. I just wanted to mention that. We've got some great people.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Next is our consent agenda, consent agenda, which is item one through nine, eleven through twenty, twenty-two through twenty-five.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
So, move, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner, uh, Franklin Warner. Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Dis unanimous.
The next item is item number ten, which is a budget amendment two dash nineteen, FY twenty.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion, is there a second? Second. Probably move in second, any questions?
Yes, sorry.
Commissioner Hamburg.
You want to go first?
Commissioner Hamburg.
Uh, yes, my question is, uh, when we approved this, we approved it as coming out of the landfill fund and all and, which really was a lot easier for me to take or whatever, knowing two hundred thousand dollars coming out and all. And now, you know, I find out that it's coming out of our general fund and I want to know, I would like to know why the change and give, get a breakdown of the two hundred thousand, how does that go?
Well, the, it says it was originally budgeted in the landfill fund. So, to the general fund.
Mr. Chairman, so this budget amendment is actually transferring the, um, funds from the landfill fund to the general fund to cover those, um, items that's listed on there for the Clayton Clean and Beautiful, it's a separate division of the Commissioner's office, so they had to have an operating budget and, um, we felt it was necessary to move it under the Commissioners under one oh one from the, we're just moving the money from the landfill fund to this account.
Yeah, so we're getting it out of the landfill fund, we're putting it to the general fund, so for the operation expenses.
And it's for those, um, for wages, benefits, um, and supplies.
Okay, give me the breakdown again.
The wages, um, benefits and supplies that's shown on the, the first four line items on the budget amendment says clean and beautiful, um, regular wages, VICA, Medicare, miscellaneous tool supplies and, um, office supplies. And it has a dollar amount shown for each one of those.
So, for salaries.
Thank you. And the total is two hundred thousand.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
How will the hundred thousand be utilized that's, um, coming from MARTA? Will that offset the two hundred thousand or are you going to use that to add to?
That'll be in addition to, because we already have the two hundred thousand budgeted that we're moving. The money from MARTA will allow us to cover more of Clayton County when it comes to our beautification efforts. Any other questions?
Only thing I will say is that I know the question was asked about the two hundred thousand, but, um, I was hoping that for the record, we could hear the breakdown of the salaries and the supplies so that people will know, because it helps when we have to get phone calls, so that's, that's what I wanted to ask.
Was that your question?
Yep.
I just wanted to know.
Add to it.
So, we just wanted to know what is the salaries, what is the supplies and the amount.
So, on the budget amendment, the first line, um, says clean and beautiful, it's regular and wages, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, VICA and Medicare is eleven thousand four seventy-five, the miscellaneous tool supplies is twenty thousand, office supplies eighteen thousand five hundred twenty-five dollars. That total is two hundred thousand dollars.
And I know we receive it, but a lot of times, people refer to the records, um, during these meetings, that's why. Thank you so very much, I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Dis unanimous.
The next item is item number twenty-one, which is ordinance twenty twenty dash thirty-one.
Good evening, uh, Chair, Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners, I have ordinance twenty twenty dash thirty-one, which is an ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County, Georgia's amendments specifically Part One, related laws pertaining to Clayton County, Article Two, Board of Commissioners, Section two dash seven, compensation expenses of members, general authority of members to set the salary and compensation of members for the county governing authority to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So, move, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? Second. Any questions? Here and none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
Nay.
Four one, it passes.
The next item are the board appointments, starting with A, which is a board appointment for ethics.
All right, first board, board appointment is the Board of Ethics, Ms. or Alethea Ensley. Appointment will expire on, or has expired on February second, twenty twenty, appointment is one year term. This appointment is made by the Commissioner of each district, beginning with District One and confirming, uh, continuing, excuse me, in numerical order. Each year, this year appointment is for District Four. Commissioner Davis, you have a recommendation?
I do. I move we appoint Ms. Jackie Lee.
Is there a second?
I didn't get the last name.
Lee.
Lee.
Excuse me.
I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Dis unanimous. Next, our board appointment is Animal Control, Ms. Gloria McCain. Term of the Animal Control Board will expire on March twelfth, twenty twenty. The terms are for three years and this new term will expire March twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Any recommendations?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to reappoint Ms. Gloria McCain.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, probably move in second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Dis unanimous. Next board appointment, also Animal Control, Mr. Jim Carter. His term is on, on the Animal Control Board expires March twelfth, twenty twenty. The terms are for three years. This term will expire also on March twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Any recommendations? I'd like to, uh, recommend that we reappoint Mr. Jim Carter, is there a second?
Second.
Probably move in second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Dis unanimous. Also, another board appointment to the Animal Control Board, Ms. Kristy Thomas. Her appointment expires on March twelfth, twenty twenty, term is three years, next term will expire on March twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Any recommendations? I have not heard from her, so unless anybody has any other recommendations, I will, uh, ask to hold that till next appointment, till next meeting rather. That concludes, uh, appoint, board appointments, Madam Clerk.
The next item is item E, which is BOE nineteen twelve zero zero one, a text amendment.
The Clayton County Board of Commissioners initiates a text amendment to the official zoning code to amend Appendix A, Article thirteen point seven of the zoning ordinance to remove the defined size of, of the public sign required to allow upgrades to the required legal public notice signs. The, um, current sign is approximately four by four, the sign that's being, that's, we're proposing to change to is a sign that's about two by three. The sign we have, uh, shown here on the, on the screen here, it's, um, will be a pre-printed sign, it'll be a lot more legible, a lot more attractive and readable, it'll be, it'll be readable from both sides and, um, we think it would be, it would serve the public better. So, the recommendation, however, from the, um, planning commission was from the zoning advisory group was to deny the sign, they felt like the sign should be even larger. Uh, comments from staff and from our experience, the larger signs have been pretty cumbersome for staff to install and even to the point of having some workers' comp issues surrounding having to install some of those larger signs. So, the proposed signs, again, are a lot more easier to install and a lot more reader-friendly.
Okay, that is, huh?
Are we open for questions?
Okay, and this is a-
Any questions?
Let me get there, let me get there. All right, this is a, uh, county-initiated text amendment and it is a public hearing, so, uh, first I will ask if there are any-
I need to read the public-
Yes, go ahead, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Citizens may speak for or against an item that is considered by law to be a zoning decision and each side will have ten minutes to present its case. In the event there's more than one speaker per side, speakers must divide their time in order to complete their full presentation within the ten-minute time allotment. When the time runs out, the speaker will be expected to immediately cease speaking and leave the podium. Applicants or citizens speaking in favor of an item shall speak first. Applicants in zoning ordinance cases shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal. Opponents of the zoning decision item have no right for rebuttal. When speaking, speak directly into the microphone, begin by stating your name, address, and name of any organization you represent. Abusive, profane, or derogatory language will not be permitted. Thank you.
All right, anyone want to speak in favor of this change?
I would, sir. Mickey Garber, unincorporated Rex, Georgia, thank you Commissioners for this opportunity. I am speaking in favor of this sign. It's not just something hung out there on a post. It's framed, it's neat, it's clean, it's appropriate for what, for what it's needed for. Thank you for your time and I know what to look for.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak in favor?
I would, I think the sign would be appropriate because at the end of the day, when I stop at these particular signs, I have to get out the car anyway, so, to take a picture of it, so if you make it bigger, uh, more legible, but this, this would be sufficient because you got to get out the car to, to read it anyway, so, uh, I think this would be appropriate. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in favor of? Everybody, anybody want to speak in opposition to? Anyone in opposition? Come forward. Come forward.
Evening, Chairman, Board. Uh, the only issue it has to do with, uh, what the other board recommended is just the size. We're going to a smaller size. Font looks great because I'm sitting in a chair. But if I'm driving down the street and trying to take a quick glance, uh, as to any information on that, that's going to be very hard, uh, to read. But that's really the only thing that I would have against it. Having something printed is definitely a plus compared to some of the handwriting that's gone on the signs. Uh, but I would have to, uh, agree with the other board that if they could just make it larger, I think that would be, um, uh, safe for the residents to view. So, thank you.
Anyone else in opposition? All right, is there any comment statements, uh, by board members?
Yes. I agree with the larger size. There's too much on there. If you're driving, well, first of all, let me say this. Um, in the, well, presently, we have the sign facing the street. I would like to see the sign where you can see it coming or going, turned in a different manner. Um, that's number one, but I, I see some things on here that I don't think necessarily need to be on here. If, I mean, if so, you do have to get out the car and read them, like you said, but if we, um, use the information from the old sign, put a little bit of the new, but not so much. Because if you're driving by, you want to be able to read it quickly. You want to know there's a, 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 a hearing, the date, and the place. You know, I don't think we need the purpose. The zoning advisory group needs to be on there. So I think there are some things that we can tweak on this, but have it large, but not so, it's too busy, if you know what I mean.
I kind of disagree because unless this information is on this sign, they're gonna call us. What's going on?
Well, it's a phone number on here, but everybody's gonna have to stop and read it, is what I think.
And also, to me, when you're driving, um, you know, it, you could barely read a street sign driving. So I've always just, you know, know I've got to stop or I got to turn around and go back and see what it is or take a picture. I, you know, and that's just my opinion. I think this is, I think this is good because I, I mean, I do get those calls. Anytime you see the little white signs, they're gonna call me, what's going on, what's gonna happen and so forth, but.
Oh, I'm looking at the sign and for me, some of the information just to, needs to be inverted. We need to know what, where, and when. That's what's on the other side at the very beginning, the date, uh, the time, and the place. The case number and, and some of that information, if it's going to be there, can be at the bottom. And it can keep that font, but increase the, uh, the font size of some of the other ones. The other piece that I'm concerned with is that this is for legal notices. And that was brought to my attention this week that legal notices are only published in the printed paper, not online. And what can we do to begin to make sure that this information is put online? So that's something, that's another concern we have to begin to think about.
Be honest, I agree with this, too much on the sign. Um, I think that part of the issue that we've had is we try to communicate too much in a particular venue and we have to focus on the venue, as, um, the other Commissioners stated, um, so eloquently stated. We just need to know the where, the date, the time, the basic information. And the phone number is fine. Um, I think the seal is fine. But, um, I do believe that it's very important for us to keep it simple, definitely keep it simple. And when we're talking about stopping and getting out, that's a little dangerous, especially on these roads. So I think we just need to make sure that it is visible, and I concur with the other Commissioners.
Mr. Jicky, you got something to add?
Uh, yes, Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. Um, I hear the comments and we're gonna, um, adjust, uh, the information. This started with, the sign we used to put out looked old. It didn't even match what we're preaching about branding the county. It didn't look good at all. So we looked around in the metro to see what other folks are using. We came to this site. Uh, we came to this size. We're gonna cut down on the, on the information and kind of make sure that the information that is published or will be on the sign is pertinent to the hearing. So that they will know, we'll work with county attorney to make sure that whatever we put out here, it's legally what is allowed. Then we kind of, I, I think we can do away with the request. I'm not sure, but we're, we're gonna work on it and give you a sample before we go to press to print this thing.
I have an idea.
Yes, ma'am.
I can, I can get with you all, please, on that, you know, using the information from the old. Like, at the top of the old, you have notice of variance hearing, so they know what, what it is and all, and I agree with that. But make it larger and enclosed, like you all said, but, um, what, when, and where.
The, the larger part was what we're having a problem with. What actually prompted us to start looking? You know, when things don't happen, you don't start looking for change. One of our employees developed a bad back trying to put up the large signs. And I asked him what was wrong. He said he pulled something in his back, trying to put up the large sign. I said, wait a minute, let's look around what others are doing and put something, one person. It used to take two people to put up our old signs and they didn't look dirty either. So we're trying to see something that is portable, readable, that will be out there and representative of the efforts we're making in the county.
Well, one thing I want you to be mindful of is, you know, I hear both sides here and I'm kind of liking the middle a little bit split, but I want to make sure that we are providing information that the citizens can look at and say, okay, I understand. That might even cut out them from going to the meeting if it's something that they, that doesn't impact them in a certain way. Uh, like on, on the signs here, you have automated drive-through, uh, car wash. That specifically is outlining what that notice of, uh, that, that zoning is about. So if I have a problem with that, then I would go and be heard. If I didn't have a problem with it, but at least I knew it on up front, on, on, on the front end. It's about providing concise information or as much information as possible. Sometimes you got a area, okay, do I err on the side of too much information or not enough information? For me, I always want to have enough information to make a informed decision on before deciding whether to fight for a cause or not. So, again, as you look at it, to try to tweak it a little bit, I want you to also take on the, into consideration that people might be like me and just want to know specifically at that time, when I see the sign, that this is what it's about.
Okay, and one last thing. Please remember, whoever put the signs out, please do not have them facing the road. You know, you're looking, trying, you know, but if, if it's, if, I can read it when I'm approaching, coming or going, that's a lot better.
Yeah, I think those signs was a double sided. Yeah, these here are double sided.
I'm gonna get dinged for this one. I'm just gonna go ahead and say it. You know, my daddy worked as a lineman for Bell South AT&amp;T for many years. He had to climb poles and do a lot of thing. And maybe that's what some people were representing. But we work for folks. I pay taxes, everybody pay taxes. And sometimes we just need to look at, are we doing it the most efficient or effective way? I want people to be safe. I don't want nobody to get hurt. But if we don't have somebody that can do the job, then we need to look at getting the people who can get the sign in the ground. You know, it almost reminds me of the ham scenario when they say, well, why you cutting front and the back off on the ham? Because mama did it, mama did it. Well, you got a bigger pot now. So we're not gonna throw out the job to be done because it needs to be done because of one thing. I think we need to be mindful of what we say because even that statement is insensitive to the employees you just talked about. I know it's minute, but I don't think that should be the driver of how and why we do things. We need to make sure we've got the people that can do the job and look at the most efficient and effective manner to get it done. That's all. You know, everybody got to be held accountable at some point. That's all. Thank you.
Any other comments, statements? Is there anything to add, Ms. Pan?
No, that's, we'll take these comments and we'll bring back some designs for you to look at so that we could, uh, all find a sign that we think is most appropriate.
Okay, so for clarification purposes, what we're voting on is the construction of the signs themselves, not the, not the, uh, verbiage on them.
The, the intent of the text amendment is, is actually to deal with the size because the code gave a specific size. So in order for us to make deviations here, now, in the future, we would be addressing that size, uh, issue. So the, the proposed text amendment only removes the, uh, issue related to the size of the sign. So the, the contents and the verbiage is something we can all.
Always tweak.
We change, okay.
All right.
So just the size.
So with that being said, yeah, size of the sign.
I still think that content should come back to the board because what happens, again, we get the calls, you stated it. So I think the content should come back to the board for a final decision. Because it is a public notice, that was the only thing.
Well, we would have to re-advertise, come back, no, no we wouldn't because we already have the hearing.
If they can change it anytime, they can change it at any time.
We could still, uh, just table it.
Yeah, let's do that. When you, when you come up with the finalization or poll all the Commissioners and come up with a final product and then make sure you send it back out to us.
Uh. Mr. Chair. Yes. Before you make that decision, the only thing that's before you right now is to remove the size of the sign.
Right.
It has nothing to do with the content, tabling it to come back and add something, deal with the content.
No, we're not tabling anything.
Okay.
We're not tabling anything. We're, we're taking a vote. Matter of fact, we're gonna do that now. So with that being said, is there a motion to approve?
Still moved on the size.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Here and none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this unanimous. Next.
The next item is BOC nineteen eleven dash zero zero three, CUP.
The applicant is Motivation LLC. On the behalf of James M. Gibson is requesting a conditional use permit for truck sales and service facility at the address of eleven fifty-seven Battle Creek Road. The subject property is currently zone heavy industrial and the parcel ID information is, is identified in your packet. Staff, staff recommendation is for approval. The zoning advisory group recommendation is for approval. However, there are two recommended conditions that staff recommend. Those conditions are that all vehicle repair are to be located within the main building. No outside repairs are allowed on site. Condition number two, there shall be no expansion of the existing building footprint, which is currently at one hundred and sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two square feet. All existing and proposed parking must be paved and striped.
Is the applicant present?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm John Azar, sixteen ninety-five Virginia Avenue, College Park. I have with me the, uh, owner and the petitioner, Mr. Earl Williams. Uh, sometimes your company's called Motor. Motivation. This is Ken Fekada, who represents the owner of the building. It's under contract to Mr. Williams right now. We had an opportunity to meet with Commissioner Davis earlier this week.
Okay, before you start, sir, uh, do you want to reserve any minutes, uh, for rebuttal if anybody should want to speak in opposition to it? Usually two or three minutes at the end, uh, if that's what you desire. It's up to you. Two minutes? All right, two minutes it is. So set the timer for eight, please. Uh, go ahead, proceed, sir.
Real quickly, this, this property right now is zone heavy industrial. Uh, it's a hundred and sixty-five thousand plus feet. Been vacant for ten years. We've had a lot of break-ins over the, the last four or five years. This is an opportunity for us to make a transition from heavy industrial to light commercial. This is gonna be a small truck cell indoor facility. Uh, no big trucks, everything's done inside. Uh, the only thing that'll be outside will be the employee parking and we hope to employ about thirty people, uh, in this facility.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. All right, is there anybody here who would like to speak in favor of this request? Anyone want to speak in favor? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? All right, Ms. Pan, you already, uh, outlined the conditions.
Yes.
Are you, where's the owner at? Are you in acceptance of the, uh, conditions that were set forth?
Yes, sir.
Come to the mic and say it, please. Now, I don't trust you, but I need to hear it on the mic, all right?
Yes, sir, I, yes, sir, I am.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Davis.
Um, the only other condition is I'd like them to meet with DLT. I know we have the widening project going on in Battle Creek and to make sure that we do have those sidewalks imposed in front of that, um, facility.
We'll add, we'll add that as a condition.
You accept the last condition, sidewalks?
I do.
All right, thank you.
I move we approve it.
I'll second the motion. Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you.
The next item is GBOC nineteen twelve zero zero thirty-seven, FLUP.
The, the, the next three cases are related cases. I will sound them separately and they could be addressed separately. The first case to be sounded is a request for a future land use plan amendment. The applicant, Tony Dawson, on the behalf of Cedar Properties, is requesting a land use amendment from mixed use to general commercial. The subject property is located at six, sixty-six ninety-two Terra Boulevard, Jonesboro, Georgia. The parcel ID number is, is addressed on your agenda packet. The subject property consists of point nine zero acres and has approximately a hundred and ninety-eight feet of frontage on Terra Boulevard.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and the Commissioners. My name is Eckhart Blackard. On behalf of the project owner, Cedar Properties LLC. If I could approach, I have four photographs.
I couldn't get your name, I can't hear you.
Speak a little louder into the mic, please.
Eckhart Blackard, on behalf of Cedar Properties LLC. What's being handed to the board, um, is a series of four photographs. The first two are a view looking directly at this point nine acre parcel, um, in the northbound direction and then the second page in the southbound direction. And as the board can see, the current situation here is, is bleak. Uh, quite frankly, it's nothing more than blight currently. It's been abandoned. We're going into the third year. Um, Cedar Properties purchased this at the end of twenty seventeen, beginning of twenty eighteen. And at the time, it was being run, um, as a, uh, new and used tire, um, store. But prior to that, had actually been run for many years as a C-store and, uh, with, with fuel supply as well. And Cedar Properties LLC, in this mixed-use zoning, um, is, is requesting that they be permitted to put this property back into what they feel is, is, is its best use. If you look at pages, um, three and four in the handout, you can see the proposal. And we also have our, um, engineer is here and will be speaking for a few moments this evening as well. Um, but you can see that the, that the plans are to put this up to a national standard.
I'm sorry, sir, I didn't ask you before time, did you want to reserve any minutes for rebuttal?
Only one.
Only one minute, okay. Proceed on, please.
So, and when I speak of a national standard, something along the lines of a QT or what's referenced here in Exxon. Um, nothing that's unbranded, um, but everything that's, that's aesthetically pleasing to the eye. And the infrastructure is already, is still in place for that. So you have the, um, you have the, the, the pump islands. You also have the underground storage tanks that are still located on site as well. So from a, a economical feasibility standpoint, for Cedar Properties, it makes the most sense. But it's still going to require, this property is purchased for three hundred and fifty thousand. It's still gonna require in excess of a hundred thousand investment going in. But Cedar Properties is willing to commit to that and, and then you can see what's, what's planned there. I would also like to note, from a due diligence standpoint, at the time that, uh, my client was looking to purchase the property, there was apparently some confusion in the planning department as far as whether or not a grandfather's. there was apparently some confusion in the planning department as far as whether or not a grandfather status would apply to this particular parcel. And at first, was, was told that yes, that the permissible use would be as a convenience store or gas station, and only that the footprint of the building could not be expanded or enlarged, which Cedar Properties is perfectly okay with. This was subsequently changed, but at the same token, if you look, if you look down the street, again, a little bit in the background, but if you look at the first two pictures, you'll see that in terms of existing businesses that are there, this would still fit into that general look of the area, but in fact, would increase it both in terms of increases to the tax base, as well as, as providing several employment positions for the county residents as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody want to speak in favor of this request? Anybody want to speak in favor? Come forward, mister, come forward.
Mickey Garber, Unincorporated Rex, Georgia. We have to begin somewhere. Yes, I'm in favor of this man having a business, this kind of business, in this area. Again, I'm gonna reiterate, we have to start somewhere. I would like it written into the record that he provides sidewalks, God bless you, sidewalks on his frontage, and that his parking lot and area be kept clean to the standards of QuickTrip and Chick-fil-A. Again, we have to start somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak in favor of?
Good evening, my name is Tony Dawson, I represent the engineering firm, Dawson Engineering. What I would like to address is kind of what the gentleman has just spoken. On, we are definitely are going to provide sidewalks, I think there are actually existing sidewalks, but there may be a D O T project that may be happening in the area. So, we are definitely be coordinating with that to make sure that any sidewalks that are installed are in line with that. Also, we will be providing dumpster enclosure with the fencing, as well as a gate in front of it to make sure that the property is kept clean. We're definitely also gonna resurface the parking lot, add new parking, striping as well, so that's just a few things I want to say about the property.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right, at this time, anybody want to speak in opposition to? Come forward, please.
Raymond Robinson, Clayton County. Please excuse my voice, I'm a little hoarse, but I want to say this. Do we really need another gas station on Terra Boulevard? I believe we have quite a few, more than enough. We need retail, we need some shops, we need restaurants, not just gas stations and convenience stores. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in opposition? Anybody else? Ms. Pan, did you have anything to add?
Yes, before we move to the next case, the, the recommendation from staff was for denial, and the zoning advisory group recommendation was for denial.
Commissioner Davis.
First, let me add that we have begun to clean up that area. We have a new Starbucks there, we have new A T and T store, and we've begun to, the owners have begun to redevelop the plaza up there with a couple of good restaurants there. But because of that, I agree with you, we do have a little too many gas stations in this area, and for that, I recommend denial.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Any questions, statements, comments? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
The next item is H B O C nineteen twelve zero zero thirty-five, which is rezoned from M X Mix U S District to General Business District.
And this is the companion case.
This is the companion for the rezone. To sound the rezone for the record, the applicant, Tony Dawson, on the behalf of Cedar Properties, is requesting to rezone from mixed use to general business to allow the use of a gasoline service station with a companion, convenience store. The, the proposal is to upgrade an existing facility to become a, a current and active gas and convenience store. Staff recommendation, again, was for denial, the zoning advisory group recommendation was for denial.
All right, applicant, please come forward. Any minutes for rebuttal?
I've no. Okay. I would actually like to take my time, though, because my, my comments from the previous agenda item would obviously be the same.
Yeah, about ten minutes.
But the, what I would like to add, though, because I didn't have a chance to address the, the opposition point, is Cedar Properties is not requesting a situation where the previous use of the property would somehow be different. This would actually be a situation where this, this was already for many years a convenience store gas station. So, it's simply, it's simply taking that use and actually upgrading it to the national standard, because that was another concern that was raised by one of the residents, was that, both in terms of the infrastructure being put in place that our engineer had already requested, as well as the, the overall look, if you will, of the parcel. That's where there's also a landscaping component that was also built into the plans that, of course, would be added in as well. So, in terms of the overall look and feel, it's not that we're bringing in a new gas station that wasn't there before, because there already was a gas station there before. It's simply going in there, reopening that station, but making it one that is not going to be an eyesore, one that comes up to a national standard like a Q T. That is Cedar Properties' request.
All right, and I do apologize, sir, for not allowing you that one minute at the end. Anybody would like to speak, again, in favor of applicant's request?
I would, sir.
Come forward.
Is this, is this in favor of?
This is the same applicant, this is a companion case to the one we just turned down.
Okay.
Great opportunity. Mickey Garber, Unincorporated Rex, Georgia. Again, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this subject. Again, I would like to iterate. In, in the response about cleanliness, that they were gonna provide dumpsters and a barrier for hiding those dumpsters, that isn't what I want to hear. I want to hear that the paper, the condoms, the sanitary napkins, the every other piece of garbage laying out there every morning is picked up and the area is kept clean. That's what I want to make clear. Thank you.
Anybody else in favor? Anybody in opposition? Anybody would like to speak in opposition? Commissioner Davis.
I move we deny, B zero seven nineteen twelve zero zero three five.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
The next item is the third companion, B O C nineteen twelve zero zero thirty-six.
For the record, this, this is a request for the applicant, Tony Dawson, on behalf of Cedar Properties, is requesting a conditional use permit for a gasoline service station and convenience store within the general business district. This third companion follows the request for a future land use plan amendment to allow the G, the G B district. Then the third request was, was to rezonate from M X to G B, and this third one that we're hearing now is actually to allow the conditional use within that G B district, should any of them would have passed. But however, staff recommendation, again, was for denial of this request for conditional use permit, as well as the zoning advisory group recommendation is for denial.
Anything in addition, sir? Anybody want to speak in favor of?
I think I've said, uh.
Anybody else? Anybody in opposition? Commissioner Davis.
Move that we deny.
I'll second the motion. Any other questions, statements? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Mr. Reed?
Mr. Chair, yes, we need a executive session on litigation personnel and real estate.
All right, I'll make a motion, go on to executive. Let's say, is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Good night, everyone. All right, motion to reconvene. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye. Oppose, it's unanimous. Mr. Reed?
Would you like me to take them together?
Take them together, please.
Okay. First is a initiation of a map and zoning amendment at forty-two oh nine and forty-two thirteen, Grant Road, from R M to R S one eighty.
It's on Ample Block.
What you, which one you reading there?
All right, I'll make a correction, I'll, I may come back to that. The first is a settlement agreement in the case of Michael Pierce et al. versus Randy Dwayne Brashears et al. in Civil Action File Number six, one, one, one colon, one six, C V zero zero seven seven nine dash O D E. And it's a settlement in the amount of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars to be paid to the Order of Law Officer Carroll Scott. And as attorneys for Michael and Michelle Pierce, and and to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect the appropriate revenue source or expense.
All right, we'll vote on this one, we're waiting on the next one. Is there a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
While Mr. Ajik is looking for that, I'd like to also make a request that that I can make an offer to two candidates for staff attorney at I believe the grade is thirty-three, step three. Don't need to put the compensation amount there, too, or just?
Do you have the total amount?
The total amount is one hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars.
For both?
That's correct.
Not both individually?
Both individually, yes.
Yes. All right, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll second the motion, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose.
You did not ask for a question, sir.
Is there any questions?
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Only thing is, is this gonna call a parody issue among any other attorneys within our county?
I there are no other staff attorneys in the county. There are no other staff attorneys in the county at present. The staff level for that starting salary is gonna be the same, they're just being started at that, they're still within the pay scale, but they're just starting at that two steps higher.
So, the grade, yeah, the grade is not being changed.
Right.
But it's at a step level, so that's within the pay range.
That's correct. And, and also, that money is reflected in, that does not affect my budget, I have enough to cover that.
So, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. What else, Jim?
I would like to initiate a map and zoning amendment, but I'm still waiting on that information from the information that was provided.
Can I have a point of privilege right here? I just want to, just a point of privilege, since we're waiting, I just want to commend our teens in the Office of Youth Services. They actually had an amazing event this weekend, they had over four hundred teenagers sign up for the event, and I actually went through the maze, so the kids actually had to pull scenarios, and then they had to walk out the responses to the scenario. So, I actually had to go see Judge Simmons myself.
Did they do a good job?
They did a great job.
Teen pregnancy?
They had everybody there, they had teen pregnancy there, they had Watkins Funeral Home there. They also had the Health Department there, and the sheriff actually had a makeshift jail there. Yeah. Interesting. But I think it's important, because too often teens don't know that their decisions do have consequences, and to have that greater response, it was good to see. Because of the work of this board collectively.
Mr. Reed, you ready? It don't matter, that's the problem.
Well, we have to fix it, chair, I can't do nothing about it.
I'm just letting you know.
Oh, we have to fix, she have to just pull the names out.
It's better like that, ain't it? So, I don't need to tell you anymore.
She didn't want to make sure that, that nobody was that ending on their email. But she knows she's important. No, it's a name, say green, say green, I'm a rear flip. Green means I'm sending the center, that's red.
Green, oh, the color, the color background.
No, that means it's coming internally to me.
Internal customers.
I'm using it.
That's why I said it's green, the little background.
I use it as opposed to.
Somebody else that you know can use it. Thank you. Uh, wha- what's the problem, Mr. Reed? Can't find?
Can we prolong this, um, can we do this? What you need to do to make this happen? Say yes.
No, they gotta get it right for the minutes. What happened?
Oh, good time, pass away.
Oh, I thought you was about to say, that senior, what's her name? If y'all can't find it, is there, I guess we can wait till next meeting, huh? Cause we need to, we need to be correct, whatever we are.
That's correct. So, because we don't have the, it doesn't appear we have the correct one at this time, then I don't have anything else at this time.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
Probably move to second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous, good night.